Good evening. My name is Jeff Hull. I'm the Assistant Town Manager and Chair of the Cable TV Advisory Task Force. And this meeting is the Cable License Renewal Public Hearing. We apologize for a bit of a delay in terms of getting started. We'll try to move this process along. Notice of the public hearing has been duly posted by the town clerk and has appeared as a legal notice on the Town Crier on March 15, 2006, and on March 22, 2005. The legal notice reads as follows. "A public hearing will be held on Monday, April 3, 2006, at 7:00 PM in the auditorium at the Town Hall, 121 Glen Road, Wilmington, Mass. concerning Comcast and the possible renewal of its cable television license due to expire on March 24, 2007. Members of the public are encouraged to testify at the hearing concerning the performance of Comcast under its current license, number two, future cable-related needs, and number three, interest of the community. The hearing is held pursuant to federal law 47 USC Uniform Code 546 and State Regulation 207 CMR 2.02 and 3.05. Public records pertaining to the renewal are available for inspection and copying at the Town Hall. For additional information, contact Jeffrey M. Hull, Assistant Town Manager, at (978) 658-3311, or email him at jhall@town.wilmington MA.us." Notice about this ascertainment public hearing has also appeared on the town's website, on the WCTV Community Bulletin Board, and has been posted at the Wilmington Town Hall. An article entitled "Tell Comcast That WCTV Matters To You" also appeared in the March 15, 2006, edition of Town Crier. At this point, I would like to introduce the members of the task force, or have them introduce themselves, and I'll start to my left.
Louise Leland, Technology Coordinator for the Wilmington School Department.
Donna Gasek, Executive Director of WCTV.
Quincy Vale, Resident Town of Wilmington.
Wayne Aruda, Resident Town of Wilmington.
I would also like to acknowledge Jane Lyman, Manager of Government and Community Relations from Comcast. She is here this evening, and thank Comcast for once again providing a stenographer to record the public hearing. The purpose of this meeting, as noted in the legal notice, is to receive input from Wilmington residents and public officials concerning the past performance of Comcast relative to providing cable service and concerning the desires of Wilmington residents and public officials for future cable service. This is the second and final public hearing to be held during the ascertainment or information-gathering phase of the cable renewal process. The first public hearing was held on Monday, December 5, 2005. As noted during the previous hearing, this public hearing is intended only to receive information about Comcast provision of cable service and not for internet or telephone service. This hearing is not intended to be a debate, but simply an opportunity to provide comment. If people have questions about cable service, Comcast policies, or other issues related to cable service, I encourage you to pose those questions. We may not be able to provide answers to all those questions tonight, but I'm sure Ms. Lyman may be able to provide some follow-up. The public hearing is being recorded via stenographer and is being recorded by WCTV for future broadcast. Individuals offering comments are asked to go to the mic in the center of the room and speak clearly and loudly so that the stenographer can produce an accurate record of your comments. Speakers are asked to identify themselves by name and to provide their current residential address or affiliation with the town and to approach the mic. There's a sign-in sheet at the back of the room. I would encourage you to sign in if you have not already done so. If individuals are not able to attend the full meeting this evening, you're asked to just reference the fact that you are not able to attend the full meeting and reference a time, which I do see on some of these, we have a couple of people that need to leave early, so we will entertain their comments as soon as possible. One of the things that we would like to do following this meeting is to hold the record open through April 17, so that if individuals were not able to be here this evening and wish to offer comment after this meeting, or if you wish to offer follow-up comments beyond your comments this evening, you can do that by sending those comments to Ray Lapore, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. In order to do that, I would entertain a motion from the Cable TV Advisory Task Force to keep the record open through the close of business on Monday, April 17. Is there a motion?
Excuse me, Jeff. The 17th is a...is that the holiday?
That is correct. Then I would suggest we make it the 18th, which I guess would be that Tuesday. Is there a motion to keep the record open through the 18th?
I'll move to keep the record open until Tuesday, April 18, 2006.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, anyone who is just to make comments following this meeting can do so through the 18th. Just by way of process here, Donna Gasek will provide a brief overview. I do want to get to those people who have to leave, and I guess maybe what we can do is take them out of order, since as I understand it, there are two people that have to leave by 7:30. So, we'll have them first, give Donna an opportunity to make a brief presentation, and then I will go through essentially the process that we are dealing with here, and then we'll open it up for general comments. We also have some questions that we would like to receive some input about, so that we can be better prepared to draft the request for proposal that's required. So, with that, as I understand it, there are two individuals that came this evening to offer comments and have to leave at 7:30. The first one is...I'm apologizing here. Is it Manuel Cravella from 144 Grove Ave? Sure.
It's the first time being in front of the camera. I just want to say I've been a resident for about maybe eight or nine years now in Wilmington, and that I used to produce a show called Country Storm, that also, which made, you know, the host of the people was at least around five people that made happy there, and plus 50 people that used to attend. And that's not including all the number of people that I used to see on the outside and say, "I watched that show. That is fantastic." And that's given, you know, that if it wasn't for the local cable company, you know, you can produce shows like this and having other artists come in. In the meantime, you know, which is recently, because I don't want to hold up too much of your time, it was happened this last year, I became unemployed, and my field is pretty well dead in this country right now, or less maybe to someplace else. And so, I've been unemployed, and finally my employment ran out. If it wasn't for the bulletin board watching on the cable company, I found out about the seniors, you know, a retraining program, and which I happened to found out about it a lot sooner than the government told me. And I got onto the training program, and it was, and it worked out that the local cable company brought me in for helping me on the retraining. I wish I could have stayed longer. I happen to got a full-time job now, but, you know, so I'm back to work again, I'm happy to say. So, I mean, without the cable company, you know, without that local channel, you know, there's a lot that I, you know, that helped me and made a lot of people happy and, you know, got me some money coming in and got me back to work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, we have Sharon Keef, 144 Grove Ave. Oh, okay.
She helped produce Country Storm with me, too.
Okay. Any additional comments that you'd like to make before you leave?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that needs to leave here? Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Dan Howard, and I started out in public television. I actually started out sweeping the floors, almost like a Mrs. Doubtfire situation. And, you know, I eventually graduated to being a cameraman and a studio manager, and I moved up to be a recordist, sound man, and I won a Best Television Sound Award. And I thought, you know, that when I, you know, now 20 years later, I'm kind of coming into the cable television scene thinking that this is going to be, you know, a piece of cake. And the people at the television station have more or less kind of given me free rein to take out the equipment and kind of use it and do what I need to do in terms of learning it. And I haven't been pressured to produce or not produce, and I feel free to create and to recreate and to really explore the possibilities of television production. And in the process, I'm discovering a whole new community around me. I'm finding a richness in a small New England town. I'm a New Yorker and transplanted to New England, and I'm just finding such richness and abundance through the lens of a camera. And I'm finding, you know, that my relationship to the station is growing, and my connectedness to the community is becoming better and better through my connection with the television station, and I hope that relationship grows and fosters, you know, as time goes by. So, I...if anyone is here to endorse the station, I am here to say, you know, definitely renew this license, and, you know, if there's any people who need to support the station, I would encourage the business community to further sponsor this station, because it's a great resource for the community. I mean, I see it in other communities, like Nantucket and in Scarsdale, and I see it in the Cambridge area, and I see what great things they're doing there, and I can see how this station can really, can do great things, as it already is with the programming that's going on, and even the stuff that's being done privately, so...Donna, you're doing a great job, and Bill, everybody, Holly, thanks.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, I'd like to...yes. Do you have...you have to leave early? Okay. One more, and then we'll try to turn it over to Donna.
My name is Ron Grimley from 173 R. Church Street in Wilmington. If somebody would say to you, "What is your opinion of a Baptist pastor? What is your opinion of a Baptist church?" What would that opinion be? This is a Baptist pastor. I've been in Wilmington for 15 years now as the pastor from First Baptist Church in town. And in Roman Catholic New England, there are all kinds of interesting opinions about what Baptists are and what kind of interesting creatures we may be. But having our Sunday service on community TV hopefully is helping to dispel an awful lot of those very interesting myths. And it's not only our church that's on community TV. It's the Congregational Church, it's United Methodist Church, it's St. Thomas's Catholic Church. For shut-ins not able to get out, for people just passing through the channels, we also do a Sharing Our Faith program where the clergy in town get together and talk about topics together. And I think that's a real interesting example for this community. Having individuals who have some pretty differing opinions on some pretty important subjects, and yet still able to show love and concern for one another, is a powerful statement to this community. It's a powerful statement for present company, excepted for the leadership of this community. There's a lot of messages that come through the local access TV channel that we all need to hear. We need to see kids, we need to see football games, we need to see what's going on in the lives of our young people. And we don't get that through the main channels. We get Wilmington TV, we get Wilmington people, Wilmington life through the Wilmington cable channel. So, we encourage with all that we in our, and I believe all I speak for the churches in town, renew this license. It's important for this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Sullivan. St. Lormon Street. I came here tonight to speak in support of the license for WCTV. It is one of the most important resources that the town of Wilmington has. It is an intricate part of the community. It allows people that don't have a lot of resources to get messages out, whether it's to raise funds, for charity, church organizations, town government. It gives people who are not able to attend many of the town meetings to be able to watch them at home. I just can't imagine our community without WCTV. So, I do seriously hope, and I'm sure you will, endorse the license. Thank you.
Thank you, Selectman Sullivan. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Donna Gasek, who is the Executive Director of WCTV. She's going to offer a brief presentation.
Thank you, Jeff. Wilmington Community Television was formed in 1987 to serve the communication needs of residents, educational institutions, the local government, and nonprofit organizations in Wilmington, Massachusetts. For 18 years now, WCTV has offered the Wilmington community, through our training and resources, the ability to produce their own programs about their own community. We offer the community public, educational, and governmental access channels that support the goals of individuals and local institutions. WCTV is a 501(c)(3) charitable nonprofit organization, and it fulfills its mission by providing members with access to and training on professional quality video production and editing equipment, and channel time on the local cable system. These resources are vital to the Wilmington community. We provide television and computer training and resources to the community, and through our organization, we increase access to educational, cultural, political, municipal, and human resources within the town. We strengthen the ability of all organizations to serve the residents of the community by providing a medium through which they can share their resources with the community, and provide local television programs and opportunities not available through other mass communication venues in Wilmington. The value of local community television is directly proportional to how much the community uses its services. All of the programs that residents see on channels 9, 10, and 22 are a result of members' requests to borrow video equipment and reserve edit rooms in the studio, request channel time, and submit announcements to the Community Bulletin Board. For the past 18 years, WCTV successfully fulfilled many community needs by offering these resources. The popularity of the television station, the number of members, the number and variety of programs produced, is a tribute to the creativity, resourcefulness, and ambition of a community that values free speech and expression, and truly desires to share ideas and opinions, and to hold discussions about various issues and varying viewpoints. WCTV presents taped and live programming approximately 12 hours a day, seven days a week, on channels 9, 10, and 22, and presents live taped and distance learning programs 12 hours a day on the education channel. Distance learning programs are satellite-based programs presented at the request of the school department. During 2005, we cable cast more than 1,200 taped or replayed programs. We showed more than 301 different locally-produced programs that totaled 462.8 hours of programming. 305 imported programs that totaled 206.35 hours of programming. The total number of hours of programming was 6,669 hours. And in between all of our programs, we display the Community Bulletin Board. In 2005, we displayed 1,700 messages from 230 local organizations. Membership at WCTV remains very affordable to all residents and organizations. Persons who live or work in Wilmington and join WCTV pay a membership fee of only $10 a year for seniors and students, $15 a year for individuals, $25 for families, and $50 for organizations, and that includes equipment and videotape training and the ability to use the studio. WCTV offers the use of professional quality television equipment that would otherwise be cost-prohibitive to use by most individuals and organizations. We provide training in the use of using, for example, Canon GL1 and 2, and Canon ZR7D digital camcorders, and digital editing systems such as Adobe Premiere, Final Cut Pro, and iMovie. We also offer training on various professional graphics programs such as Scala Info Channel Designer 3, Cool 3D, and Adobe Photoshop. In 2005, there were 360 equipment reservations for field gear, 121 reservations totaling 289 hours of studio production use. There were 94 digital editing reservations equalling 282 hours, and 688 linear editing reservations that equaled 2,025 hours. Many volunteers helped to make WCTV the active, vibrant center it has become. Volunteers helped to create the sense of community that is the foundation of WCTV. These volunteer producers and crew donated 5,460 hours of time to productions. They are the people who cover many of the local events that residents enjoy on local access. WCTV offers a variety of television production and computer courses to members. These classes and workshops are open to all WCTV members. Last year, there were a total of 305 persons trained in our classes and workshops. WCTV staff schedules regular classes, as well as arranges classes to accommodate the schedules of individuals, community organizations, and community groups. The total value of our services to the community in 2005 equaled some $2,144,000 and $155,000. All of the details of our services are listed in our annual report. I welcome you to take home a copy of our annual report that is available at the back of the room, and if you're watching this meeting, I would be happy to give you a copy if you call me at the station. Thank you very much. I'd now like to share with you an excerpt of some of our programming.
... The presentation you are about to see is a small sample of some of the programming offered to Wilmington viewers by the staff and volunteers at Wilmington Community Television over the course of this past year.
... Well, most of you know, my name's Ray Lapore, and I've lived in Wilmington all my life.
Are you satisfied that the town has done everything within its power to effectively battle the proposed Trans-Rail development?
I think we are well-positioned in our battle about NET. It seems that there's a technicality.
I think they're doing an outstanding job for the situation that they have had.
But I can freely say that I think the Board of Selectmen is in a better position now than it was a year ago.
.................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. I figured if I'm on the committee, I could probably march with them. All right.
My fans, I'm sorry, I can't talk now. My fans are out here.
Approaching us now is our Minutemen unit. As you could have heard a little earlier, they've already made themselves known further down the...
Kids like that.
He's still up there, isn't he? They missed him. He's still up there.
Yeah, I know, they missed Walter up top.
He did duck, though, I noticed, yeah. Fire Department from New York. This says on the front.
Yep. Getting a great, great ovation.
Sure is.
This just in, the Three Stooges have reportedly been seen around Wilmington.
Hello, America, and welcome to I Am Chef America Goes Middle School.
I found myself today. Oh, I found myself and ran away.
My first question is, how did you get started working at the library?
Well, before I worked here in Wilmington, I had worked in high school libraries and a special library, but this was my first chance to work in a public library.
Let's start out with camera two. There you go. Awesome.
Good job.
Three, two, one, let's go.
Hi, I'm Michael Marcinkowski.
Michael Majoli.
Erica Malani.
Zachary Duar.
Intressy Clomo.
Kristen Pascherella.
Thomas Van Delft.
And you're watching WCTV Wilmington Community Television.
At this point, before I open this up to additional comments, I would just like to briefly outline the process, just so that everybody understands the cable relicensing process. This is governed by both federal and state statute. Customarily, the cable provider notifies the community, the issuing authority, which in our case is the Board of Selectmen, of its intention to seek license renewal beginning somewhere between 30 and 36 months prior to the expiration of the cable license. This was done quite some time ago. The Board of Selectmen is the issuing authority in Wilmington and, as such, has the final decision on authorizing the terms of a new license. In this case, the Board has appointed the Cable TV Advisory Task Force, which is the group you see before you tonight, essentially to serve as its agent in going through the information gathering process and ultimately negotiating a license, which we will then propose to the Board for its consideration. Ascertainment is a required part of the process per the statute. It requires that we gather information about the cable provider's performance under its current license and to identify future needs and interests of the community. We've referenced the previous hearing that was held. The existing license expires March 24th of 2007. The standard for renewal is, number one, whether Comcast has complied with the terms and conditions in the current renewal license. Number two, if Comcast's proposal for renewal meets the needs and interests of the Wilmington community, taking into account the costs of meeting those needs and interests. And also, the cable license is a non-exclusive license, meaning that other providers may approach the Selectmen about offering cable service. With that, I would like to open it up for others to offer comments. I think what we will look to do is spend about half an hour to 45 minutes, depending upon the number of comments, to receive those. And then the committee has some questions that we would like to ask you to solicit some of your feedback. So with that, if anyone has comments, I would encourage you to raise your hand and approach the microphone.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chris Neville. And for those of you that do not know me, I'm on the Police Department. I'm wearing multiple hats tonight because I'm also a member of the Board of Directors for Wilmington Community Television, and I'm also a producer for WCTV. I'm here tonight as much for myself as I am for the Chief of Police, who's out of town tonight, and he asked me to come and speak on behalf of the Police Department. And just to discuss some of the issues that Wilmington Community Television has helped the Police Department with. Most recently, we had a Citizens Drug Recognition Academy that was covered very extensively on the community bulletin board, trying to get people's interest and involvement. And I'm very happy to say, for five weeks going, we had very good attendance to participate in that program. Last spring, in the little clip that they just put together, which I think really spoke volumes about everything that Wilmington Community Television does for Wilmington, last spring, we had Operation Safe Prom, which was one of the little snippets that they had on the television film that you just watched. That's something that we brought to the high school. I know Holly Boyko did a great job with all the staff over at WCTV. And it was something that was done for the safety of the community, and it was certainly something that really helped to benefit the Police Department as well. For those of you kids that would rather call the Police Department or the Public Safety Building in the morning when it's snowing out to find out if there's no school, it's very simple, just to click on Channel 9, 10, or 22 to find out if school is being in session. And also, in other public notifications, when we have times of need in the community, whether it be a major snowstorm, a blizzard, a hurricane, a lot of times, the Police Department will put out information on the cable TV station to tell you exactly where to go if you need help, if you can't get out of the house. I do want to say one thing. Personally, I'm very happy with Comcast's service. As we negotiate the next contract, which I think we have another year to go on before it actually has to be officially renewed, I would just encourage you to make sure that you, let's face it, it wasn't too long ago that we paid our cable bills to Continental Cable Vision. They got bought out by Media One. Media One was bought out by Comcast. They're doing this for a reason, because they're making very good money at it. And again, it's a very good service. I think everybody in town appreciates it, but we want to make sure that we maintain the same level of service for the future, which would also include all the licensing fees that come back to the community that makes WCTV function as it does. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Neville? Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Actually, I'd like to ask a question or two, and I think you might be well-positioned to answer. As a member of the Board for WCTV and as a producer, I'm particularly curious in what your view of the existing facilities are at Wilmington Cable Television, and whether you think they're adequate to support the mission, and anything you might be able to say in that regard.
Well, if you watch the annual meeting that we had just a few weeks ago, I did discuss that briefly. We are very actively seeking a new home in Wilmington. We have money put aside in a building fund, but as everybody's aware, the cost of land, the cost of building, the cost of equipment, especially if the camera pans over, you see the level of equipment that we have on the side of the room here tonight. It costs a lot of money to run a local cable-access TV station. We're in pretty good shape financially, but the building certainly that we're in right now is dreadful. And I discussed that we don't have any regular heat. We have to bring in electric heaters. We don't have any hot water. We have cold water. Eventually, we're going to have to get out of there. The sooner the better. And certainly, the only way to maintain the facility and to actually upgrade into a new facility is to, again, keep the licensing fees active so that we can support WCTV. Otherwise, everything you saw a few minutes ago in that little collage is going to go down the drain.
Thank you. Comments? Yes, sir?
My name is Joe Bellicki, 300 Water Street, Wakefield. I'm the current President of the Board of Directors for WCTV. I've been a member of the Board of Directors since 2002, and finishing up my term as President of the Board of Directors. And I'm going to speak to three hats on. First hat will be the WCTV Board of Directors. I've seen, I've witnessed the staff, the professionalism of WCTV staff, what they do for the community, public service they do for the community. Yes, the building is dreadful, but I give kudos to the staff for producing and getting out the quality of programming that they do, even in that facility. I think it is, it would be a tragedy to see the cable TV, to see the studio go downhill for the public relations and the public service they provide. The second hat is, I am past President and also a member of the Board of Directors for Wilmington Rotary. Cable TV has provided us yearly, on a Thursday night, we'll take over the studio. Wilmington Rotary literally takes over the studio, and we have our annual auction. It's our biggest fundraiser. And it gives a little fund to the community. They can call up, they can bid on items, and it also previews items that we do for the next night at the KSC Hall. So it does provide a service, public service announcements for Wilmington Rotary. So I can speak for that also. The third hat is that I am a 32-year employee of the Reading Municipal Light Department. They, Wilmington Community TV, also rebroadcast our Board of Commissioners meeting, the Citizens' Advisory Board meetings, so that the citizens of Wilmington can see what's going on with their local utility. 15, 20 years ago, that never happened. It wasn't heard of. There was a lot of misconception about the local utility. Now the citizens of Wilmington can see what's going on, what's going on with the utility. Clear up any misconceptions of the way the business is run, why the prices are, rates are increasing, or why they're going to decrease. So I think it's a wonderful organization, and it really provides a great service for the town of Wilmington. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Holly Boyko. I'm the Youth Outreach Coordinator at WCTV. Over the past year and a half, I've seen the students that I teach grow both personally and creatively. And tonight, several students and their parents are here to share their experiences and feelings with you, so they can just come up.
Hello, I'm Kyle Sorino, 3 Plymouth Ave. I've been a member of WCTV... I get easily distracted. Get things out and shiny. I've been a member of WCTV for going on about a year now, and I started back at the middle school with Holly's Video Explorers Club. And there's a lot of great stuff in the studio. Like we said before, the churches are there, you get to see all the sports, and it's just something to get out of the house sometimes. I mean, it's really easy. Within a week, you could get your own show on the air, and it's just something nice to have. I'm sorry. I'm done. I'm done. I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Jackie Carboni, and I'm 13, and I'm involved with WCTV. I've had several projects this year that had the choice of making a video, and every project I have had the opportunity, I have chose the video choice. I did this because, I did this once last year, and it was a wonderful experience, and I had a lot of fun, and the project turned out better than planned. This experience has been great, and I know how to use the equipment, and I have been familiar with it. Holly has been a great help, and the rest of the staff also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have to say my address? Okay. Hi, I'm Kaylee Bernardo. I've been going to WCTV for the past, like, three or four years, and I love it there. The youth outreach programs are very fun to make. I made tons of new friends, and I have learned a lot, like, how to have stage presence, use a mic, the lav mic, use a camera, and look into the camera so it doesn't freak people And like, I sort of want to be an actress when I grow up, and WCTV has helped me sort of like, help me be an actress in some way. And like, a few kids at my school go, "Oh, I saw you on TV last night." And it kind of makes me happy that they actually, like, watch WCTV. And even my social studies teacher, she like, said to me and like, a few of my friends that we were going to be like, the future stars or something like that. It actually made me happy that I've been to WCTV. And if WCTV, if WCTV wasn't there, I'd be really, really sad, and I'd probably never have, I'd probably never have this experience, and I'm really grateful.
Thank you.
To me, WCTV means a lot more than women's community television. It means having fun while learning and spending time with my friends. It's not just about having a good time. I've learned how to speak in front of a camera, what to do in the control room, how to be behind the camera, and lots more. WCTV benefits me in so many ways. Without WCTV, I would probably even be shy to my friends. In WCTV, I have learned how to use the camera. I have learned about the rule of thirds, something very useful, in my opinion. I believe WCTV offers an experience that no other clubs offer.
Hi, my name's Brooke O'Connell, and I live at 5 Dartmouth Ave. And I've been living in Wilmington for all of my life. And what WCTV means to me is because my friends first got me started in it, and I had no clue what it was about, until my friends told me about it, and I thought it was really cool. I just said, "Hey, I'm just sitting around all summer. What should I do? And I'm just going to go to WCTV." And I've made a lot of new friends, and Holly, of course. And I've only been in WCTV for probably about like, two years, but it's still been an awesome experience. Even my brother likes it, and my friends' brothers, and my friends' sisters, and we just tell everyone about it, and it's so great. And some of my teachers, they ask if I can do something on the air for them, and I say, "Yes, I can," because I can. And I just like WCTV because it helps me learn about things, and it helps me, it helps everyone reach out to Wilmington, and it's just a fun place to be. And it has a lot of different programs, like, the youth outreach program and vacation camps, so you don't sit around all summer eating potato chips in front of the TV like most of us do. But it's just a really fun program, and I really like it.
Hi, I'm Jean O'Connell, Brooke's mom. She joined it about two years ago, and the summer program is a couple of hours, a couple of different weeks during the summer, and it's very, very reasonable for people. Most summer camps that Brooke has had the opportunity to join are $200, $300, $400 for a week. This is something that she's been able to join just to get her out of the house, to meet new friends, and it's very, very reasonable. It just is open to all the kids, and they have a blast. A lot of children don't really want to join things in the summer because they don't want to go out of their comfort zone. And Holly is very welcoming and makes it very easy for them. And it's just been a great opportunity for her to join it, and her brother will be doing it this year. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Kathy Carboni. I live at 8 Central Street here in Wilmington. And my daughter Jackie is also a member of the youth program at WCTV. She has been for about three years. She also participates in the summer camp, and it's a really wonderful program. I'd hate to see anything ever happen to it. Also, I am the community coordinator in town for the Chernobyl Children's Project. That is an organization, we try to raise money and bring some kids from the Chernobyl devastated regions of Chernobyl, the Ukraine, Belarus, and Russia. And last year was our first attempt at trying to raise money and get the word out that I would love, we would love our community to be involved. And we had a very successful fundraiser last year. We raised lots of money, and we brought six kids to our town last year. And I don't think I could have ever reached as many people unless I could reach them on their television in their home. And I'm very grateful for that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Terry Marciallo, Director of Elderly Services, and felt it was extremely important that I came here today because WCTV helps the elders in this community an awful lot, especially the homebound and people that we try to target as to helping the seniors. I brought a cheat sheet because it's quite a bit. They also, we do our monthly commissioners' meetings, and they're posted and seen several times throughout the week and throughout the month. We also were able to have computer classes that Donna had mentioned previously, but geared directly to elders, which was very, very helpful. We also have used the Calendar Update Bulletin Board Program. We also had the luxury of having Andrew, who I know is here, come do a public service announcement and develop that for us, which was very exciting, and the seniors got an awful lot from that. We also have special events, whether it be the Candidates Debate, Medicare information. We had an Energy Conference with Senator Tar. We've had a lot of programs. conference with Senator Tar. We've had a lot of programs that they've come at last minute to tape at the senior center to make sure that it's public knowledge. And we've gotten a lot of people giving a call because they've seen it, and they're saying, "You know, we happened to catch the end of it, but can you give us more information?" And that's a wealth, just to touch anybody that is homebound and is unable to come to the center or know more about elder services. This can kind of get it out there a little more. I think it's also important to mention that this is not only a cable station. First of all, if we're in a pinch, they're our neighbor. I don't know how many times that we've had problems with some equipment, and they've come up and helped me at the last second to make sure we have our movie day that is very successful. But also, they're part of the community. They're not only just a TV station, just known to, known as WCTV, but they're truly a part of the community, and I want to thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Yes, sir.
My name is Gerald Skilling. I live at Nine Lockwood Road in North Wilmington. And I don't know if I'm out of place here, but I thought this meeting was about the contract with Comcast for the cable system. Is that right?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I wanted, from my understanding, is they have a exclusive rights to supply the cable to the town, so therefore we don't have any competition?
It's a non-exclusive license, so there are, so that other providers can come in and provide cable service if they elect to. To this point, there have not been other parties interested in providing cable, but that may change.
Yeah, why is that? Because all the surrounding towns have competition. This town doesn't. Why, why are we excluded from, you know, Verizon, or RCN, or whatever else is out there?
Well, I think with respect to RCN, the communities that RCN went to were originally part of the Boston Edison group of communities. I guess it's N-Star or whatever they're current, currently called, but they were essentially Boston Edison communities, and it was, it's my understanding that RCN is, was in some way affiliated with Boston Edison. So that's how they happen to work to provide service in those communities. With respect to Verizon, Verizon is beginning to offer cable in a number of communities, and has also expressed interest in offering cable to Wilmington. So I would expect that will, will happen in the near future. Thank you. Mr. Grinder.
I'm Richard Grinder from 451 Middlesex, and I, in line with what the gentleman before me was talking about, I would like to make certain that with whomever the town deals, that they include the three-channel approach, and that that be part of any contract, so that we're able to maintain the Wilmington community television. So I understand that there will be other companies. I've had people out by my driveway one day, they were looking at the poles and figuring out the distances to put in their own fiber optics. So I know that's a very active, some very active ideas. I would just want to say on WCTV, the emphasis is on community, and in a sense, it's a glue that holds together the various events of the town. Otherwise, we're twenty-two thousand individuals running around doing our own thing. I'd like to be sure the percentage of revenue from whomever provides cable ends up keeping the place going. I appreciate very much having been able to work with the people who work for the cable studio. They've been a great help. Working in this area, I think brings out, in a way that very few things do, the idea of creativity. It's something you can't put out a kit and say that's it. To be able to work on your own project with assistance provides a great deal, and it has to me. Now, I was thinking, the other night with, the other evening, nothing to do, right? Have a life. I'd like to say I was watching the cable studio, cable, and they were showing the talent show from the high school. And there were, we had two guitar players and a drummer, and they were really carried away, and they were doing a great job. And I know the individual who actually taped the show, and he has a few years on me, believe it or not. But the thing was, I thought, how wonderful it is that we have a project that goes across ages. It doesn't mean necessarily we like the music, but we like to help you put it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectman Frank West.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I actually want to speak real, try to be brief, but I also wear several hats in the community. Frank West, Two Richwood Road, and as Jeff mentioned, one of the members of the Board of Selectmen. One of the things that, from the WCTV standpoint, is a lot of the meetings that are broadcast. We have one of our newspapers that says that they record written history one week at a time. WCTV records the entire meetings, all, a lot of the meetings that go on in this town, including where we're here tonight, in its entirety. So that if somebody wants to see not just the snippet that was in a news broadcast, but they can actually see the entire meeting, see what went on, and you'll get a lot more information that way. From the wealth of government meetings that are on, and even, you know, just from seeing the year in review, to get an idea of the wealth of programming that WCTV does, not just from the government side, but from all the kids. And being a parent, my daughter was in the video vacation camp, and my son, who's in Cub Scouts, did a tour of WCTV recently. And, you know, from, even from the youngster's standpoint, they can get a better appreciation of how a TV studio runs, and, you know, all the magic that's behind the camera. So one of the things I'd like to say is that obviously, it kind of goes without saying, that I'd like to see what that, whatever support that this contract can give to WCTV, and as much of the revenue stream that we can get to continue the, continue WCTV, both from the programmer's standpoint and on the message board, which, as several of the other speakers said, affects virtually every, every resident of the community in one fashion or another, from a no-school announcement on WCTV, to the government meetings, to all the, you know, the ideas that the, the kids bring, bring forth, and the various programmings, the religious programmings that, you know, especially help shut-ins. And just, you know, just the idea that for fifteen dollars a year, an individual can be their own producer and produce a TV show. I know from experiences, Donna knows I had my own show for a while. Couple of things that I'd like to address also is that, one, if it's possible, because as you know, as a member of the Board of Selectmen, we received a petition while requesting the, a senior discount. So one of the things that I'd personally like to see if we can do it, is to arrive at some sort of senior discount to help some of the seniors out in our community. Again, if the ball's in your court as far as how to negotiate that, if it can be negotiated, some towns have it, some towns don't, I understand. But I think, you know, whatever we can do to keep the cost down for as many people as we can, that would be appreciated. The other thing that I'd like to touch upon is the, any of the drop lines, or anything that, you know, like, for example, this building here, and any of the buildings that have wireless connections, or any types of connections that flow, that WCTV flows through. If there's any improvements, if anything on that end needs to be upgraded, if there's anything that we can do to upgrade those facilities, you know, those as well. And probably just in closing, I'd like to, you know, again, once again, thank Donna and her staff, you know, Andrew, you got Ron, Dawn, Walter Collings over here, several other people that have been, you know, take their time and do a wealth of volunteering. And, you know, you see like, somebody like Mr. Grinder, for example, that, you know, he got the Good Guy Award. And one of the reasons why he got the Good Guy Award is because of the wealth of time that he spent behind the camera. And I just think that, you know, WCTV is a valuable entity to our town. It, without it, you know, a lot of people would, would, I think they'd, they'd do a lot, you know, they'd be a lot less motivated in some, you know, to, to attend some of the public functions, because, you know, you see them on the message boards. And probably the last thing I'd like to say also is that, you know, as far as the message board goes, you know, we do some fundraising in town, and a lot of other organizations do a wealth of fundraising, and, you know, WCTV helps us immensely, and we're grateful that, you know, that WCTV's there. And just keep, keep up doing the good work, and we'll continue on from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Yes, sir.
Evening, Walter Collings, Fair Meadow Road. I'm a member of WCTV for a number of years, and I'm proud to say I currently sit on the Board of Directors. I'd like to say the following: local cable access, these words mean so much to many people in our community. From gavel-to-gavel coverage of our annual town meetings, to the faces and voices of elementary schoolchildren in a school concert, local cable access is there, documenting the action to keep the citizens of the town informed and entertained. Youth outreach programs provide an outlet for schoolchildren to learn not only how to videotape an event, but how to edit their footage into a complete production. Having fun and learning, what a winning combination for anyone. At WCTV, we even have a yearly scholarship program for Wilmington senior students who are going to be entering college with communications as a career, funded with contributions by residents and businesses, and sales of copies of programs seen on WCTV. Local candidates explaining why they should be elected to office, we've got it covered. Fundraising events for local civic groups, you're on the air. School committee meetings, live coverage. Board of Selectmen's meetings, as the words leave the chairman's mouth, viewers are aware of what is going on at the town hall. As a matter of fact, I'd been at a Board of Selectmen's meeting where a viewer was watching something said about him, and he hustled down there to correct what was said. Special events around town, school vacation and summer youth programs, a wide array of public service announcements, and much more. All a part of how local cable access keeps its townspeople informed and entertained. At WCTV, our slogan is "Keeping You in Touch with Your Community." I can't imagine our town without it. Thank you very much. And also, you asked about WCTV and where we are and so forth, where we're housed. I would love to see Comcast take that building down on Main Street and perhaps offer a long-term lease to not only WCTV, the building seems big enough, perhaps we could have three or four local communities all housed in the same building. I don't know if something like that would work. Sure would be nice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Peg Don, Twenty Suncrest Ave. I wanted to talk to you about the senior discount, which we seem to be the only town that is not eligible in the surrounding towns. I know Stonem has it, Burlington has it, I believe Tewksbury has it. And so, I think that when you confer on the new contract, I think that this should be on the table. And also, I wonder why Comcast is so expensive. I don't have any premium channels, and yet I pay more from Comcast than I do for a local and long-distance telephone. And I just think it's too expensive. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, what I'd like to do is reference some letters, some correspondence that we've received, reference this into the record. Okay. Before we do that, Carolyn Harris.
Thank you. Carolyn Harris, Seventeen Marion Street. And I'm here on behalf of the Wilmington Historical Commission, and also on behalf of Terry McDermott, who is the curator of the Wilmington Town Museum at the Haddon Tavern. I saw a sign, I think, at La Dukes, a little picture that said Wilmington, "One small community, one big family." And what keeps us a family are the communications, WCTV. It offers us an opportunity for those who cannot make an event to actually sit at home and watch the event, and know what's happening in town, whether it's, it's political, or religious, or it's entertainment. We get an opportunity to know what's happening in our schools, the wonderful programs that these young people have spoken to tonight. It gives us an opportunity to know what's happening at the senior center. It keeps us together, and it bridges a gap, as Dick Grinder so aptly said, it bridges that gap of age in our community, so that the elderly know what the young are thinking, and what's going on in their world, and that's so important. In terms, and I guess that was a little personal, in terms of the historical commission, I would like to say that WCTV and its wonderful crew of volunteers have come and they have videotaped numerous programs that we have had. Our World War II program that we did with World War II vets a number of years ago. Having that on tape is so valuable. And every time they have taped a program, the library gets a copy of the program. So if for some reason you miss it on WCTV, a year or two later, you know that that resource is there. In terms of the museum, which is so important to us, the museum uses a community bulletin all the time, so that citizens in Wilmington know what's happening. The Friends of the Haddon Tavern, who support the museum, they in turn put, when this Christmas Social has happened, this strawberry festival's happening, the museum had a lecture series this winter that went through February, March, and April. We also had recently, a program, recently, I think it was yesterday, a program on Wilmington collections, you know, and our, I should say, community participation at the museum has doubled this year, and we owe that to WCTV. So it's an essential part of our community, and we are in full support of renewing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn. Yes, Sandra.
Sandra Curtin, Two Ninety-three Salem Street. I'm also on the Board of Directors. I have been for many years involved with WCTV. Actually, not one of the founding people, but right after them. And I was thinking, as I was listening to different people speak, that Mrs. Carboni, I think, mentioned to get the word out. And that's actually what WCTV does on a daily basis. It gets the word out of things that are about to happen, or things that have already happened, and a record of what's, what's going on. When we first started with WCTV, Charlie Gilbert had the foresight to make sure we got all three stations. So we have the public, the educational, and the governmental stations. And didn't really know what we were going to do with that, didn't really know if we could fill the time slots, but we, that was one of the things that we had to do. And as time went on, at first we would say, gee, this was such a good event. Too bad, you know, people didn't cover it, or too bad people didn't know about it. Now, just about everything that goes on in town gets either advertised or covered by WCTV. So we've kind of come full circle, and the town actually depends on those broadcasts, whether it's for the fun things, or, like Carolyn said, the fun things, or the religious things. things or whatever, the town, or the governmental things, the town now depends on those. People, everybody talks about the selectmen's meetings or the, or the school committee meetings because they've all had a chance to see it. Did you miss it live? Yeah. Did you have a chance to catch it once? Sure. Did you have a chance to catch it at another time? Yes. So that we, we really are becoming a community with shared experience and I think this is because of WCTV. So obviously, I'm in support of Comcast renewing our contract, but also for a good percentage so that we can continue to do the work that we have definitely developed over the several years that we've been in business. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I have some comment letters that have been presented and I will read these into the record. The first one is, was provided by Ms. Margaret Dolan. It is a letter both to Comcast and then the response that was received. This letter is directed to Kevin Casey, Senior Vice President at Comcast, New England. Dear Mr. Casey, I have received your Comcast Important Information Letter and the rate increase for Burlington, Stonem and Wilmington effective February 1, 2006. Well, I don't understand, what I don't understand is why residents, quote, qualified seniors, end quote, receive discounts in all surrounding towns except Wilmington. Please don't tell me that our community did not negotiate the discount, so are, so you are withholding it to the detriment of our seniors. As long as I am writing you, would you have any influence in the channel selection for standard cable? Other than PBS, History and the Sports Channel, most of TV is drivel. Could you persuade the powers powerful to give us another thinking man's channel? The response to Ms. Margaret Dunn is as follows. Your recent letter to Kevin Casey has been forwarded to my attention for review and response. Unfortunately, Wilmington, Massachusetts does not offer a senior discount. In the communities where the senior discount is offered to Comcast customers, they must meet certain income-eligible standards and be 65 years of age or older. Senior discounts are determined in license negotiations, vary from community to community and are normally applied only to portions of the service. The discount available in most areas is 10% and applies only to the basic level of service. The senior discount is a need-based discount and Medicaid eligibility is used only as an income standard. We do not discriminate based upon insurance coverage. We also offer basic service, a low-cost alternative to any subscriber regardless of income or age. At Comcast, decisions which affect our program offerings are among the most difficult choices we make. We base these decisions on four criteria: customer demand, competitive landscape, business factors and federally mandated programming. Comcast carefully weighs each criteria with respect, with special consideration given to program offerings that satisfy the majority of customers. Comcast strives to provide customers with a rich variety of quality programming at a fair and reasonable price. If you have further questions or concerns regarding these issues, please contact our customer service team at 1-888-633-4266. Representatives are available to assist you 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Sincerely, Joseph P. Kinney, Executive Customer Care and Communications at Comcast. This next letter is from Christina A. Stewart, Library Director. To whom it may concern, since I am unable to attend the Cable Task Force Ascertaintment Process Public Hearing on Monday, May 3rd, I am writing these, this letter to express my support of Wilmington Cable Access Television, WCTV. The Wilmington Memorial Library uses WCTV in a variety of ways. The library advertises its services and programs on WCTV Bulletin Board, making the community aware of what is happening at the local public library. WCT volunteers have videotaped library programs that have been then rebroadcast on WCTV, including important local history programs which document facts and anecdotes about Wilmington's, Wilmington not found in other, in any other source. Holly Boyko, Youth Outreach Coordinator for WCTV, has recently organized, quote, "Motion Bookworms," end quote, a group of middle school students who will be creating a news-style program about library programs and services. The win-win collaboration will give teens the opportunity to learn about the field of broadcasting and will give residents information about the resources available at the public library. In closing, I would like to add that as a Wilmington resident, I view the local public access channels to keep abreast on what is going on in town. I look forward to having WCTV remain a vital part of Wilmington's information network. This is a, an email to, directed to me from Robert Richter, the Deputy Police Chief. The Wilmington Police Department has utilized WCTV on several occasions in the past as a vehicle for reaching a large portion of our community to inform them of department-sponsored/run events, emergency information, road closures and detours and other important information we felt needed to be given out to the community in the interest of public safety. As you are aware, Lieutenant Neville has also produced a series of informative shows called, quote, "Behind the Badge," end quote, which covered a wide array of public safety topics and was aired on WCTV. We as a department feel that WCTV has been an invaluable tool in assisting our department to deliver the level of service our community deserves. We plan on using WCTV as much as we can in the future and regard this service as a valuable resource to this department, one which would be sorely missed if it could not continue. If you should require further comment, please advise. The final item that I would like to offer for the record, and I won't read this into the record, but it's a, a letter that I sent to Ms. Jane Lyman, Manager of Government and Community Affairs at Comcast, requesting particular information with regard to issues concerning the contract. The letter is dated March 10th of 2006. I'll provide a copy to the stenographer. I would note that we have not yet received a response to this letter. We were looking for a response by the 27th of March. But there are a number of questions that we have that are relevant to our license negotiations and I would like to make sure this is part of the record. Are there other comments, questions, if, yes, sir?
My name is Bill Marsh. I live at 106 Deering Drive in Tewksbury. I'm here because I am on the Board of Directors, but the reason I came to Wilmington is, well, I'm going to step back. I was born and brought up and spent 35 years in Plymouth, Mass. We had a wonderful cable system there and many of the same kind of programs that we have here in Wilmington, we had there. I lived in Minneapolis, Minnesota for several years and they had a wonderful cable system with, with great local programming. I moved to Tewksbury in 1992 and they had two channels on their cable, one for government programs, selectmen meetings, school committee and, and all the other various government meetings and they had another channel, the education channel for school committee and, but there was nothing else, you know? Kids in Tewksbury, there was no place to go for, to learn how to use the television production equipment and I eventually ended up down in Stonem and I became a member there and I, I did work behind the cameras for selectmen meetings, school committee meetings and so forth. I also used the equipment over at Wilburn City Hall, but it was something lacking, you know? They didn't have the, the membership that you have here in Wilmington. And I eventually met Ruth Kennedy, who was the director at the time, and she said, you know, you could join the Wilmington family. And I became a member and I had my children come to the, the vacation camps and for the, the students that are here and their, their parents. That was a wonderful program, inexpensive. My daughter attended it and she's now a freshman at Bassett College, so it was just a great start and it was inexpensive. My son attended it and then now he's a freshman at Austin Prep. I think if you don't live in town, you may appreciate it more than the residents who live here. So, you know, it's, it's a jewel you've got and I just hope you can negotiate a good contract with Comcast. And I, you know, I think the service is excellent with Comcast, but, you know, I know it's important for you people to, you know, try to do a good job and, you know, and the townspeople really support you all. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Pizera and I came here for the coffee and the cookies. Then someone told me there was something else going on, a meeting. It's, I've been a member of this station since the beginning and, yeah, the equipment has changed. It's getting, the equipment's real state-of-the-art now and we started off with all analog equipment, but the enthusiasm is, was just as good at the beginning as it is now. It hasn't waned, my enthusiasm hasn't waned. When I started, I was a soon-to-be senior citizen and now I'm a 10-year member of varsity. WCTV, I don't have to say what it does, everybody has spoken for it. I can tell you what it's done for me. It keeps me enthused. I, I just recently returned from Florida, gated community, people with hats floating in the water, everybody's over 65. I was very happy to get back. Holly, Bill and the lady sitting up front who's now running the organization, fabulous. We do a lot for the community. I don't have to say what we do. You've seen it. Bill put together that, that little piece of tape was put together today, by the way. I don't know how he does it. A person in this town can have a history on videotape of their family's life, but if you've ever gotten involved with videotaping over the years, you wind up with boxes of tapes, most of which are not marked. You can come to our studio if you're a member, take all of that, put it together, put a life history of your family. I know I'm not touching on all the things the town, the, the station does for the town. I'm talking about what it can do for one person. I think someone in the room knows what I'm talking about. And believe me, I'm at a point now where, believe it or not, I'm teaching a basic digital editing. I mean, it's incredible. It keeps me going, it's wonderful. You know where we're at. Do the right thing and keep us going and give us the bucks and give us a place to live. Okay?
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to ask, have, have some of our members here ask some questions that are intended to get some opinions, some information from you about some of the experiences you've had with Comcast and about some of the things that you may be looking for. Does anyone want to start that process off or, Quincy, you want to offer?
We've received a lot of testimony already through the ascertaintment process, but this is the final, a public hearing, so I want to ask, I guess, two general questions and I'll, I'll follow up with more specific ones if anyone wants to respond. But the two areas I'm particularly interested in are, one, the, the interest in a senior discount and how that should be implemented. And two, the current Wilmington community television facilities, whether they're adequate or not, whether the equipment is in workable and serviceable condition or not, and the overall environmental aspects of, of where Wilmington community television is currently housed. So those are the two broad areas that I think I'm looking for information on and I think the entire committee is looking for information on and if someone wants to, to stand up and, and provide some basic input along those two things, then I, I can follow up with more specific questions.
Tom Pizera. Senior discount. I was thinking that maybe a senior package could be put together, eliminating things that most seniors would not have an interest in, at a special rate. And in that form, it wouldn't technically be a discount, but it would be offered at a, a reasonable rate for seniors. Certain programming that most seniors want, I can't speak for everyone, but things like multiple language stations that you probably don't need, MTV, most seniors would have no interest in MTV, things like that. A basic senior package at a very reasonable rate, I think, would be one way of handling technically not a discount, but in fact, it would be a discount for them.
What, what is a reasonable rate, in your opinion?
You got me. That's up to you to figure out. I don't know what the rates are right now, so, but what I'm saying is if they could have a modified package that would be, would be what the seniors really want to see and only what they want to see. I, I understand the basic stations would be in it, but all of these extra stations could be eliminated from the package, as I said, MTV and things like that. I, I think that's one way of looking at a senior discount in the form of a senior package.
But that, that technically would be open to anyone who wanted to sign up for that particular package, right?
Would be offered for anybody who qualified as a senior only.
Right. I mean, of course, you know that we have, I think, very little, if any, I think we probably have no authority over a programming choices at all, but certainly.
Yeah, I'm aware of that and that's why I'm bringing, I'm thinking this would be one way of dealing with the seniors' needs, not that I'm one of them.
Of course not. Thank you.
Let me just speak to the facility itself. You don't really know how tough it is for handicapped people until you're in a position like this here. The studio itself is not handicap accessible. Luckily, young enough that can hop down the stairs with, you know, hanging on to the railing. So you don't really realize what goes on and how accessible, how unaccessible things are until you're kind of laid up like this here. So if you talk about the facilities, I invite you to take a tour of the facility. Not only can't you, trying to trip me, not only is it not handicap accessible, but, I mean, it is a rundown building that WCTV is making the best of and they do a good job of making the best of having that facility, running the facility in, in their productions. But, I mean, do yourselves a favor, take a tour of the facility and you'll see what I mean.
May I comment on his letter?
Yes, sure. I think you need to use the microphone though, so it'll be captured by the stenographer and, and via Wilmington Cable Television.
I'm referring to the response that Mr. Kinney gave to me. He said, "The senior discount is a needs-based discount and Medicaid eligibility is used only as an income standard." I don't think he means Medicaid, I think he means Medicare. And when I was in Stonem, I had expanded basic. He said the seniors are only eligible for basic service, but I have expanded basic and I had it in Stonem and I still received a 10% discount. Currently, expanded basic with the charges is about $53 plus a month and I don't have any premium channels. So as I said, I think that's 53 plus is a lot for seniors to foot.
Can I ask you a question, ma'am?
Sure.
In Stonem, do you recall roughly how much per month the, the senior discount you had was equalled out to?
It was 10%.
10% of $50, was it $5 a month?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Quincy, when Frank West to Bridgewater Road, earlier I spoke when we got to a senior discount and I think one of the things that maybe this task force should do is review some of the contracts with other communities. some of the contracts with other communities, see what types of senior discounts are offered, and see if we can mimic some of those. As far as, you know, the details, I think that's what the task force is here for, but I think what the community wants is probably not so much to give you direction, to say, well, a five-dollar discount or a ten percent discount. I think the direction is, is that to explore a discount and see what you, as a committee, can come up with. The other thing I'd like to mention regarding the facility is, is that maybe that's something that could be worked into the contract that, I'm not asking that Comcast restore, rehab the Swain School, but maybe there's some work that Comcast might be able to volunteer to do to improve the facility, understanding that the ultimate goal of WCTV may be to move into a different facility, but maybe there's something that Comcast can offer as far as, you know, making it a better working environment, a better place to work. The only thing I'll just add to that real quick is that some of the communities that I know that have local access, and Donna can probably attest to it, either work out of very, you know, size-wise, very compact places, you know, maybe one room of a school that may or may not be open as many hours as they want, or, so at least this way here, you know, at least WCTV has a private facility. They have a key to the door, and they know that they can walk in and walk out. I mean, granted, they have set hours, but, you know, they know that they're there. So like I said, you know, maybe we could talk to Comcast and see what they would be willing to do to help the facility.
Thank you very much.
Sandra Curtin. To speak to the facilities of the Swain School and the equipment, we have, as you saw on that collage, a wonderful product, and you can turn to any one of the three stations and see our product that comes from a less-than-acceptable building. It's acceptable in terms of it's getting us by right now, and we're looking for better facilities, but just because the facility is not top-notch doesn't mean that our product is not top-notch, and also that our equipment is very good equipment. We're turning, we're turning over, as Tom had said, from analog to digital. All our cameras are digital now, and maybe Donna could speak better to exactly what we have, but we voted to buy new equipment as well, so we're always upgrading our equipment, and I think we're, we're keeping a very good standard for the equipment that we have going. We don't have things that are taped together and hanging on barely and really are not the requirements of the studio. Everything is in good condition, but the studio. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wayne Aruda. I'm a local resident, and I've been on the committee for the past year or so. One of my concerns from the outset has always been the bundling of services from Comcast, which would include internet access as well as cable. It's not the function of this group to deal with the internet that's governed by a separate governmental body, but in terms of pricing and competitive positioning relative to any new companies coming in, the bundling of services, which may also now include telephone, is going to become an issue. So it's been one of my hopes that we'd get some more questions or comments about the internet service as well as the cable from Comcast, since they do provide both. We did get some comments last ascertainment hearing, but is there anyone here who has internet service from Comcast that might care to make a comment? Yes, sir.
Bill Marsh again, and I'm from Tewksbury, but I've had a lot of problems with internet service with Comcast, where it cuts in, cuts out, and they always blame me, my computer, but, you know, we've changed computers, and we still have, you know, the same problem. So, you know, I wonder if the residents of Wilmington may have some of the same problems.
It doesn't, it doesn't seem to be a question that we get asked very often at this hearing, but it is one that, you know, I'm very interested in. Yes, Tom?
I have that service, and I have nothing to compare it to, and I very seldom have a problem as far as losing my connection, so I run two computers. But as, you know, as price, I can't compare it to anyone else with price, because I've always, I've never been off of a telephone. I've always been cabled, and I don't have any real problems with it. I'm not talking price. I'm talking about the service. So whether...
So you have, you have a bundled service, which includes both internet and cable access?
Yeah, I have my telephone. I just got the new telephone service. I have my television and my computers. I have a bundled service, and I don't really have, you know, I have the typical TV breaking up of the signal, which I think everybody has, and I never had another service, so I have nothing to compare it to. But generally, and if I've had a problem, I call them, and most of the time, my problem is solved on the telephone, when it comes to the television service. I've had a couple of, I just got a new digital box for high definition, and I had problems at the very beginning with a muting problem, believe it or not. It muted, and we could not get rid of it, and it was solved over the phone, and I had another problem not too long after that. I can't remember the details, but that was solved over the phone. So I'd like to say something bad, but I really can't. My telephone service is, is better than what I had before. It's thirty-nine dollars a month, and I can call anywhere in the country. The long distance is included. I used to have a service that took me down, what, down to Rhode Island someplace, and now I can go anywhere in the country, and they haven't raised the price. And I'm not saying it's the greatest price, but you're talking service now as opposed to cost, and I can't complain about the service. Television picture, yes, I do get a digital breakup, which was addressed the last meeting we had, but not that much. And I know how easy it is for that, for that to break up, being involved with the station and digital products, so. Telephone service is what they said it would be, and my high-definition picture is fabulous, and my computers, if I have a problem, usually it's something that has nothing to do with Comcast.
Thank you. One of the things I wonder about with the seniors in terms of the services, I don't know what percentage of the seniors who get cable through Comcast also get internet or would even be interested in it. They might...
A lot of seniors don't have access to internet.
Okay. Likewise, if the telephone service is going to become more popular using, you know, the Comcast, I understand it's favorably priced when you bundle all three together, but I have no idea what the demand among the seniors might be for that, and...
May I comment that...
I'm sorry, could you take the mic?
Peg Dong, twenty-seven, Cresta. I think it's important to have competition, because since Comcast is now offering telephone service, Verizon has now met their service. At thirty-nine ninety-five, you can call anywhere in the country, and that was not true before Comcast came into the picture. So I think it's important that we have some competition with Comcast.
Louise or Donna, do you care to offer any questions or have any questions at this point of the audience?
I did want to make a comment, if I may. I just wanted to explain that I have presented WCTV's future equipment needs for equipment replacement during the next ten years, the period of the next contract that we anticipate. I presented that to the task force, so they do have that information. I will be presenting more information about WCTV's goals for the next ten years at a future committee meeting, and that will include our plan for the eventual upgrade to digital playback and other digital needs that we have to keep up with the changing technology. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
My only question concerns, and I think you just addressed it a few minutes ago, the type of service you get when you do call Comcast with an issue. I can concur that in my own community, every time I've had to call, I've gotten an answer directly. So I wanted to hear some other responses.
I have the digital television service, which is a little bit pricey, but I like the techno and electronica music channel. That's nice background stuff. And also the internet service. And my comment on the internet is, I've never had a problem that calling that eight-hundred Comcast number, they haven't been able to solve. They seem to have a good staff down there. They're knowledgeable. And I also operate a Macintosh, which usually, when you talk to tech people, as soon as you say "Macintosh," they, they kind of get nervous and put you on hold for a while. I've never had that problem with Comcast. So in that respect, I'm very happy. I wish they could cut the price a little bit. Basically, it cost me about a hundred and eighteen dollars a month, I believe it is, for those two items. But quality costs, I guess, right? Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. West, Frank West.
Thank you. I just wanted to make one quick comment regarding the, like you were talking about, you know, how many seniors would be interested in the bundling. And again, I understand that that's not the purpose of this meeting, but one of the things I just wanted to remind this fine board is, is that we have two over fifty-five projects, you know, one being the Whispering Pines, which is forty-eight units, and one being the Yentles Farm Project, which is eighty-six units. And those are both over fifty-five exclusives. So the reason why I mention that is, is that you're going to be getting, probably over the next several years, you're going to be getting an influx of more over fifty-five people, aged people, which eventually will be into that, you know, the senior bracket. So something that, as a lot of our community ages, it's something that's going to become more valuable, and for the, for the younger people that stay in the town, obviously, as we age, you know, computers are more of a way of life, and, you know, probably, you know, the whole internet access and stuff is a way of life for a lot of people today. And like I say, just as, as the community ages a little bit, I think it would be that much more important.
Thank you. I would just like to make one general comment in terms of the, both the INET and WCTV. From the town's perspective, certainly the INET, the institutional network, which is essentially a closed-loop system that was negotiated into the current license, the town has found that, that resource very useful. We currently are using it, to some degree, for access to the internet in some of the buildings that were not able to obtain access in an affordable manner. So the institutional network is being used. We're also looking at using it in the future for security purposes. So that is a vital part of the license, and will continue to be a vital part of the license in the future. With respect to WCTV, the town relies on WCTV, as was mentioned in some of the letters here, for informational purposes, getting information out to the community. Some of our emergency response plans, whether it's the Board of Health, Public Works, Police, Fire, rely on using WCTV as one method of providing information to the community during emergencies. So these, both of these resources are very important to the, to the town itself as we operate and provide municipal services, and I would expect that additional comments will be forthcoming within the comment period to that effect. If, unless there's any other comments or questions, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Are there any other comments or questions? Not hearing any. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? I would just remind people that if you would like to comment, or for anyone who is hearing this message via TV, the comment period will remain open until April eighteenth, at the close of business, four-thirty on the, on April eighteenth, for the purpose of providing information for this particular meeting. Is there a motion? Well, I'll move to, I'll move to close the hearing tonight, but, I'm sorry, I'll move to adjourn the hearing tonight and formally close it on Tuesday, April eighteenth, at the close of business on that day.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. So voted.